I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Nelson, Georgia, June 15th, 2020. We would like to take a moment to leave this alone and work through it before we get started. Father God, we thank you for your blessings, your many blessings, Lord. We just ask that you would be with us tonight, lead us and guide us to make the best decisions for this city, Father God. We ask that you would be with our servicemen, our policemen, our EMTs, Father God, during this time. We just ask for peace among the unrest, Father. We ask of you this name, amen. And James, would you like to pledge allegiance, please?
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think so much that anyone wants to add. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, please? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. All right. Number five, public hearing for physical year 2021 budget. Miranda, do you have anything for us?
As you can see, you have the new number. Too much I've actually messed with a little bit today. So any feedback from you guys in regards to any adjustments, any problems you see with the budget would be greatly appreciated. And one of the things, the notes that I obviously was on vacation last week, so I didn't get to make that adjustment, but we're going to do the use of prior year reserves. Go ahead and factor that in for the repair of the sanitation truck coming up in the next fiscal year.
What was the reserve, how much was that?
I think we're going to do the 23,000.
Okay.
So that, I actually went ahead and plugged that in this evening. And then also offset it in beside the expenses.
That was from last year's reserve?
Mm-hmm. And then another thing that come up last week was the fire tax has increased. So we went ahead and increased that today, and you'll see that.
I don't think we printed that certain thing because we were doing that literally probably a lot of.
No, no, we haven't updated that yet. So you'll see that.
It went from 92 to 96?
96, uh-huh. Again, when it comes to the revenue, we did see a slight increase in the revenue this year based off of the fact that three years, history of the past three years of actuals, I went ahead and just averaged out some of those. You'll see the property taxes has increased. Now, mind you, none of these have changed in the past two years.
What was the increase?
It's a thousand bucks on the property taxes. The fire tax, we went ahead and increased that based off of the revenues from 2020 as well as obviously what we've got to pay out. Let's see. Lost, local option sales tax, we increased that. That has not been increased in a really long time. Based off of the averages of the past three years, it increased to 131,000. Currently, we're already 6% over on that as far as our revenues on that. And yes, we are probably going to see a continuation of less revenues in that line item. However, in April, when everything hit with the pandemic, it decreased by 16, about 16%. They're already seeing an increase. That's coming back based off of, based off of this evening. Everything I've read states that it's going to be expected. It's already recouped 40% of the loss revenues, about 16%. So that doesn't really affect us a whole lot. Again, you'll see insurance premium tax, that has been substantially higher the past couple of years than what we had actually budgeted for. So I went ahead and averaged that out as well.
Yeah, we were in a meeting today on that too with Jeff Morton and Harry. They basically, I guess, the county has come up and said that they're going to make some changes there.
It won't affect us, though.
It won't affect us. It's going to affect folks that are mostly outside, the unincorporated areas. They'll drop their, the insurance tax. So yeah, they'll see, they'll see a little bit of a decrease in their, in their premiums.
Interest income, we switched banks. That has increased significantly, actually, because we're not paying bank charges either. That's a good thing.
That's a good move.
Yeah, that is a great thing. Regulatory fees, franchise taxes, all of those have really been underfunded or not budgeted correctly. So went ahead and took off of the averages of that and balanced that out a little bit better than what it's been based off, especially 2020, we've seen it's been substantially higher in a lot of the revenue line items. Let's see. Business occupational tax, that was another one. As far as the expenditures, we didn't really do anything significant other than the whole $23,000 just to repair the sanitation truck. And we increased the streetlights, increased the fire tax. Streetlights was by $1,500 just so we could try to get that, get some upgrades going on there. Maybe switching over to LEDs. Dump truck rental, we increased that by $4,000 just to be able to provide more, more days. Again, SLOS accounts, the SLOS funds, we're not really going to do anything with that as our projects have basically been on hold until we figure out what we're doing with the capital program going forward. I know we already have that scheduled in place to start in August.
For August, yeah.
To get that program on a calendar year basis. So as far as those, there's no significant changes in the SLOS lines. We added the line items for the library and that is pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions? Concerns? Oh, ELME, we also increased it. That came in a thousand dollars from what it was last year. So that's a number of increase in revenue and increase in.
For the nets for this year, 2020 or 2021?
It'll be 2021.
Okay. It came in at what?
It was a thousand.
Nineteen thousand?
It was 20,000, it was 19,000 last year. That was 20,000.
Okay. Dump truck rental still showing, it looks like it, 4,800 on page three.
I think that it's not on mine. I'm wondering when that got refritted. You know, we originally.
This is the one that we.
Yeah.
We refritted this morning. Well, that is one I refrited this morning because it had all the SLOS stuff.
Did you put the first, the general fund in the, because that general fund is not the accurate one because I had to go back and pull that original email from before we made the changes.
I can hear that.
Yeah, I just didn't have the SLOS ones broke down. This one I want to send it to.
Are we, are you estimating in your calculations the increase in property values in our area? You're like rolling that in?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't seem to connect it.
It is not actually, and we don't actually have the digest yet for Cherokee or Pickens.
Well, just Pickens, you know, just Nelson, you know. Oh, I guess we.
It's two different.
Insolidated, you know.
Yeah.
I just see, you know, possibly a lot of budgetary issues might disappear.
Yeah, well, those values will increase. Now, what, the question is, is whether or not, what we do with our military.
Yeah, well, I think you should look at that. Yeah.
Yeah.
That, no, I'm just, I'm here, just first time guy hanging with the group.
But we're actually about to roll into the whole adoption of the military for Cherokee County side.
First portion of this one's right.
Uh, within the next one.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So anyway, the bottom line is, you know, we're like rolling along and Nelson's.
The first part of this, the general fund, they wanted the SLOS.
Talk to the county.
No, I think Nelson's going to be the up and coming world. And we're all going to roll in here and we got to consider that. It's a beautiful town. What do you guys think? Do you like it here?
We do.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like an awesome little town. Sorry, you're looking at me, you're looking at you. I'm looking at both of you. Yeah, I mean, there's only three of us here for.
I was going to ask the question this morning about the SLOS. So when she sent that, I thought it was the same.
Yeah, we got to paint it.
These out, the binder, and put the other one in around the line of course. That was, that was shown.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be rude.
That was your favorite. That's what you're here for. Let's go, let's go.
It's one of these. It's one of these. They wanted five of this one or they didn't want.
At some point, you're like.
Yeah. If the one I just handed is the regular one.
It goes on YouTube.
Oh, goodness gracious.
The one in the binder, just the SLOS ones.
Yeah, we opened it up for all the comments at the end, so.
I apologize for living.
Would you say I thought it was the same table set back now?
I've never done this before.
That's why. There's no main. It's only there. Oh, okay, got you, got you, got you. So. Capital stuff, so she had sent. So she did, she did, did you, everybody want to know that you did check on dumpsters and.
Yeah, we ended up on that one. When we priced it, I have a book that they're paying. They still, but we had less.
Yeah. But I think it's really good to check on them yearly, so we.
We should probably do that every fiscal year before we start. Business prices have gone up some, at least still less than what it cost us.
Does anybody have any questions about the budget, Nathan? You have anything with what we have here and talking about the fire tax increase, the sanitation, being full of reserves, you know, the W increase in ELME, your losses, your local sales taxes is up 40% of the 16 that we lost. And then you have any questions, anything regarding the budget?
We are.
Do you have any?
I guess this is something I was looking at.
It is, the numbers changed a little bit, like a couple of things, like the dumpster. So they made a couple of changes in the operation for the dumpster and.
Because we said.
This is the car.
This is the fire tax, it's supposed to go up around six.
It is up 92 to 96. And that's something that we've dealt about. We touched on some of the. So even longer last year, whether it was going back, it gives us a little bit of. I told them that I was getting. Great job, Nathan. You have any questions, but it won't. You have brought it back. You have any questions about, I just want to make sure we cover the budget and any questions about the budget.
Anytime we got reminding an issue, but we mostly.
This one because they have changes done.
It is my second because it's the same. This year goes back into the reserves and so then we'll immediately just pull that back out basically.
We have a good bid and those are the past like four years.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
A couple thousand dollars.
We're done, we can, we got a way to paper it.
We do have the pricing on that. I just didn't put it on this because technically we lost us the vote tonight. I did put it on there for the tree stuff just because we really need that done. I can put it on for the next one, vote for the budget, but it came in 168. And if we need to actually tack on, I have to sort of run it in a bit.
That's going to happen in this fiscal year correctly?
Yes, we're going to try to.
Okay.
So. Would you want to first?
Wanted to make sure that that's what I need to know because when you, before I did amendments for the next meeting.
We have one, we're going to do one more meeting this month and. I can go get the stuff and then we can vote on it now if you want it done.
We didn't give that.
Can we amend, can we amend our agenda now so we can vote for the, for the truck, the sanitation truck repairs? It's technically a nevermind, it's not. It's something that really needs to happen. It is, well, it is an emergency.
But I'm about the dumpster.
Oh, the dump, the dump, yeah, okay. We did vote on that, so it's the dump. What about on that? We didn't vote on, we didn't put a price on it. We didn't, we voted to have a review of it. So we'll have the price in when we vote. And the reason that we need that is because when the sanitation truck is down, we have to.
I had a question about the price. The pedal sideboard is still be back in aviation to that tow crash or?
And your price and the two line items are the traditional, you can add two on top. So you go with that and then possibly you can stop it later or you could.
I'd like to wait, so I was just coming.
You could vote to approve it all just so you have the money not there and then we can decide what we want. So that would be the voting to approve the total amount, but maybe on the. Let me go. See if I can. Yeah. Okay. That'd be smart.
We're going to make the capital prices on that too.
I think we also does it. That's a case that we might have, even then we don't need to vote to amend the agenda. Yeah. You wanted, because you asked if you were a fan of me, I was saying.
The Ingram's, I want those trucks, they don't just want to be got to.
So we need to, we have a Ingram, he should, does it around here? Do we have to get pretty precise in order to do that?
No, that's your own policy in place.
Okay.
Then I may tell somebody else if it does, you may ask yourself.
I think we changed it.
It's six percent.
Yeah, I think we did a little sent to you. You did your job, and I did, I noticed the changes in what you did. I really like the fact that you looked at the three years, that's what we did last year.
Yes, I like that. I like the comparison and then, and then to that, that feeling. And I like the way that you put everything back in, in order of like, rather than having all these line items, crazy things like that. Well, I was worried about doing, like, last year I didn't want to go back to three years until I actually seen how the, everything was coming in and working. But I felt confident this year by looking back at the history of it, that we were able to make those changes in the best way, which is not huge, but at the end of the day. It's getting a little bit more in perspective of where it needs to be, so.
I'm looking at the one we have this year and the one the year before that. Yeah, I like, I like the way you, I like the way you point this out.
I mean, this year, to date, we're 11% over on our revenues received. So.
That's good. While we're waiting on her, I did have an opportunity to, to speak to Jeff and get him all the information on Kennesaw Avenue. They're reviewing it now. I've got a meeting with him and I don't have the guy's name here that does the parking wrecks about the Pickens place up there, the park up there. So, and I'll be leaving on that. Once he has everything laid out, then I'm going to ask him if it comes and we, even if we do a smaller session, and he'll lay out, here's the city's responsibilities, here's our responsibilities, this is what we've done. They are looking at the B and U T and all that stuff. They're going to get with Miranda this week and talk about the dollars there. He said that usually when they do bids, they have about eight people that will bid on a project like this. So he says bidding's not going to be an option for them. Because they'll bid it as it's for Nelson, but it will be through Cherokee County. So they have more people that will bid on those lines. That'll help us.
Be a lot better.
I think so, and he was very, he was very deep in the office and very excited, so I felt.
I can't understand that.
He is. Well, and he's complex conversation. I can't discern what.
To look at. He's going to have to make the, he's, we gave him everything today. We gave him my bid, we gave him what they're looking at, we gave him drawings, everything. So they'll take that and then he'll go with the, the group that does the drainage system for the county. So once they do that, then they'll get back with us. He seemed to think it would be pretty quick.
Maybe it will.
If we want to move on to questions and stuff before we do this. I was just waiting on her to answer. Okay, so we want to, James, you're the only one I didn't ask. Do you have any, any thoughts about the budget? Okay. All right, this is where we ask for public comments. Anybody, anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the budget for this year?
Doesn't seem like a lot of money. Does it or not, is it me? It's a small city. Huh? It's a small city. So we have to grapple around about 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, $10,000? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just, just an observation from, from one of your newest neighbors, and I think this is the greatest city I've ever lived in. That's it.
Welcome.
Thank you and welcome.
You got to watch people act like they're warm stuff. I don't want nothing.
They turned the lights on. Do we want to vote on? We're just going to public comment. I think you're supposed to, but no motion to open it in public comment.
Oh, I thought we did that earlier. Is it to invite Nelson to come in?
Okay, okay. Anybody else have anything regarding the budget? All right. No, wait, hang on, I'm good. Email questions from Lamar. Lamar said he was not able to attend the budget hearing tonight, but did offer these comments. On the revenue side, he showed a slight increase, and I would expect a decrease due to less business activity. I have a response to that. Number two, contract labor. You show $5,000, the same as last year when you did not spend. I recommend that you increase this to $10,000 and actually use it for things beyond what our workers can do. Example, clean culverts, repair curb and gutter, pothole repairs, highway tree trimming, et cetera. Number three, vacant house abatement. $30,000 for purchase, demolition, and legal fees to correct these longstanding issues. Number four, municipal court. Provide funding to resolve code violations. Example, mobile home additions on Pickens near the water tank with no current building permit and no inspections. Why was this allowed to continue? Thank you for your consideration of these items. I look forward to seeing you again soon. I can answer number four. The permit has expired. He has done no further work and does not, he never came back to get another permit. So. Actually, number four should be municipal court. We do have funds for that, but we have not pushed it because of COVID-19 and.
There is funds, so.
Stop, there is funds, so. The vacant house abatement for the $30,000, I thought that what we agreed to as the council or the council agreed to is at such time that we have a property that we needed, we have funds in our fund balance and different funds that we could pull from if needed.
And make the.
So we've already answered that.
Otherwise, you don't, without raising taxes and planning that, you're not going to be able to.
Yeah, and we have plenty of money if we needed to do it. So that was already answered in another previous meeting. And then the, the contract labor, we do need to check and see if we can get those culverts cleaned out. Well, now, I hate that we did talk about that before March when everything happened. So we could just.
I could count, we're going, somebody will talk to the Kami about Cherokee County, see if they have a machine to do it.
Yes. Matter of fact, Jeff Morton said that he will be, he's going to talk with you about the, the repaving that we have done. Yeah, he was here today. Yeah, he was here today talking about that. He's going, he owes her an answer, so when he does, if you can ask him about.
They will come back rich strife after they brown them.
He said they will clean it up and make it look right, yes.
Yeah, because that, that high low strife is gone now after they brown them.
Yeah, they'll fix it, they'll make it right. So if we can talk to you just about the culvert, cleaning out the culverts, that'd be good. And then pothole repairs. We haven't been able to do that because we've had one, right? Yeah, they're done. Well, they did the one up in the pass, that was a sinkhole. Cherokee County actually came in and did that. It's all, the, the weather was really bad at the beginning of the year and we had all of the fire stuff that has messed everything up. The guys have gone and filled in some of them, but I know there's a bad one up on Pickens Street because I had contacted HACCO a while back and they sent it kind of to us in estimate, which probably seemed to have fallen from that too. I know we had the 5,000 in there for, for bush hogging and things like that, contract labor that we needed, we haven't used it yet. He wants to increase that to 10,000. Do you guys see him, he can increase it to 10,000 now?
Not if we use it in five.
We haven't used five. Will we keep the five in there? Will we add another?
The five's still in there.
Yeah, so it will stay in.
We just didn't change it.
I think that answers all the questions. Okay, can we move on now to number six, new businesses, discuss and vote on the emergency tree removal. That's the tree over here on the Don't. The John vote, to be able to add this to. No, we can do that next. I just want to make sure. So you, did you get the prices on the paper yet? You've already given it to everybody on the lane. Yeah, it's in here. It's on your, number six, we have three kilos quoted 4,000, James quoted 3,000, Breakers quoted 2,100. And we contacted TDS, they created a ticket. Ironically, they actually called today and told me that they had resolved that ticket. So I turned by and it looks exactly the same, so. There wasn't a. I don't know what he did. T D, I sent, I did a ticket with TDS, just said that they knew there was a tree in the line and called me today and said that they had resolved the situation. So I turned by, the tree is still exactly all over the final line, just like it was prior to whatever, but that way, it was a ticket created that was just to cover us more than anything else. Ms. Friedman did come in today and did a written statement stating that she's fine with the owner of the property that's just free. And I did get a hold of Breakers today because they were able to do it last week, like on the spot. They're out of town, we had the other estimates come in, he had other stuff going on, so he has, they're out of town right now, they'll be back. He said the trees will start by Thursday. Is this with? That's everything, that's offsite removal. Because it had the 1,800 and they changed it to 2,100 offsite removal. So I just wanted it on the record, just to cover that limit. And there's a copy of the insurance stuff in there, the package. Another copy of the statement, her, she had a cave in the file, we have a good ones. So, okay, so James, any questions on that, guys? Can I get a motion to approve, create a treaty service for, for the removal of the tree on Don't Pass?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. I'll make that. 21 number. Okay. Can I get, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add? Six B. To six B, to add the Ingram, the quote for the 6885 for Ingram for the dump. No, I went ahead and added that one in there because the original quote was the 68, or 6685 for what was on the top portion of that quote. To do the additional step, the options that they had put on the bottom would bring the entire thing to 9235. So that's up to y'all, whether you want to do it as a motion to approve the entire amount and then see if we have the money there to actually do it and make the decision then, or if you want to just do it as the base 6685.
I think the 6685, we make, if you put an arm on it, they'll hit them and they'll try to lock the truck. First, just amend the agenda.
Can I get, can I get a motion to amend the agenda, please?
Make a motion to amend the, amend the, hang on, truck body.
I'll get a second.
I'll do it.
All right. All in favor? Yes, thank you. Yeah, let's see. Hold on a second. Now, let me discuss. So, so the springarm tarp system. What's the difference on the roller bar tarp system versus the springarm?
The springarm's got arms, it comes inside the truck and they go up and.
And is that, like, would that replace that one or is that in addition to that one?
It was sort of, it would have been addition to that one. We still have the tarp system in the back, but it just wasn't up there, but we just pulled it back. We still have the tar system in the back, but it just wasn't up there, but we just pulled it back. They're not going to use a tar, but they did have to have it. They thought those arms come down the front side of the truck.
Yeah, I know I got that on the trucks, but.
When you love, you hit them and bend them and.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the six-six-eight-five for.
Ingram truck.
For the Ingram truck anyways.
I make a motion to approve six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Can I get a second?
I'll do it.
All right. On favor? unanimous, thank you. All right.
I'll cut, making a little bit of a.
Do you want to go ahead and ask Jack now?
Well, like the tree service company, I'm not some aid church, it's got general liability laws, but it does not have workers comp. Were required for them to have workers comp on this, which is where they work as companies.
Not that I'm aware of, just to have a contractor do some sort of service, I don't think we're legally required to. If they were serving in the real, so, you know, serving life employees in the city, then it would have a concern. But if we're just hiring somebody to do a job.
Because the liability doesn't come back from that?
That's correct. We normally, we just want to make sure that it has some kind of reliability.
General liability insurance, not a must.
Correct.
See, my law works a most, you have, I have every, every person we do business with, yeah.
All right, anything else we need to discuss then before we adjourn? Can I get a motion for more?
I can make a motion now.
Give a second.
Sure.
On favor? unanimous, thank you very much.